Okay, it's seven o'clock. Call this meeting or if everybody could rise for name of the motion and pledge allegiance.
You're up.
Pledge allegiance.
I'm sorry.
Hey, you know, I'm a good prayer team here.
I follow your sayings.
Pledge allegiance.
Power heads, dear Lord, thank you for this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Thank you for the seasons and all the things that are going on. We just thank you for all the people that are in this room, help us to make decisions wisely and with high moral character, just all the things that you provide for us and take care of. In name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, nothing for item one. Nobody signed up, so move to item two, approval of council minutes for February 24th.
Make a motion to approve those minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Keith. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Bridgette.
Hello?
Hi, Bridgette.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me. Are you ready for me?
Yes, absolutely.
Fire away.
Our first item number three is an additional appropriation, an amount of $459,606.98. And this is to finish payment on a project that was performed last year. The invoice was paid to E&amp;B Paving.
So this is the one that should have been encumbered, right?
That is correct.
And was missed, but the funds are still there from last year and just
That is correct.
need to appropriate it for this year.
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. I thought that's what that was. Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Motion.
Shane?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, on our transfers, the first one is from EO3 to overtime. When we had this last batch of winter weather, it seemed to all hit on the weekend, and so our overtime budget took a hit. We are short one EO3 position. We don't have anyone filling that position right now, so we wanted to take that money and move it over to overtime so that we have some moving forward. Do you want me to do these one by one?
We'll vote on all three, but yes.
All three at one time? Okay. The second one is $1,300 from certification pay to education training. We have some folks that are going over to Ettnier. They do training on the CHIP SEAL program. And then we have the International Municipal Signal Association certification for Keith Tobin, who is our sign man. He's getting recertified. And then Dylan Weincoop is getting his certification as a redundancy there.
And you've got enough in the cert pay to cover that?
Say that again, please.
You have enough in the cert pay to cover that?
Yes, yep, we do. And the third one there from secretary to overtime is due to staff changes, Alicia's had to work a little bit of overtime.
And you were short there for a little bit, right?
Say that again, please.
You were short there for a little bit in the secretary setting. There's nothing to pay for that.
Bridgette, on the money going over to the overtime, that leaves probably still most of the annual salary from that job, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The $20,000 you're moving over out of the slot that's basically not being used right now, that still leaves quite a bit in that, doesn't it?
That does, yes.
Okay, so plenty if you decide in two months or four months to hire somebody, there's still
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on any of those three transfers? If not, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brian, second by John. Any other discussion?
Need it first?
Brian.
Brian, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm Ed Ferriss with the Purdue Extension Office. Just wanted to share a brief report on the Extension Office for you. I have our annual reports that we put together. Hand those out, Brian. And we, basically, last month, we had our annual community luncheon, invited everybody from the community, basically, and hired 4H Robotics, had a good presentation talking about career development, some success stories through the 4H program. So there's three handouts there from our program areas, including 4H Youth Development. The other one is Agonatural Resources, which is what I cover. JP Petrowski covers 4H Youth Development. Carolyn Everidge was our Health and Human Sciences educator. She provided a report. She has now transitioned to Allen County. She is still filling in some roles here in Huntington County, along with other nearby educators for some of the Health and Human Sciences programs. But that position is open right now for Health and Human Sciences. Just wanted to give you that update. But JP and I actually are working together on making sure those needs are fulfilled. And JP did provide a little update on 4H. You know, what we've got there is basically last year's report showing that we had growth in numbers for 4H. JP mentioned right now that he's, I think, you know, says 811 members. He's, you know, we have, 4H enrollment has started in the fall and it continues up until summer, basically. Some kids do sign up later, so he's up to 789 members. So we expect we can pretty much reach where we were last year, you know, with what numbers we're seeing so far this year with 4H. We do have also some pilot program that he's got going with Mini 4H in the schools to get more kids started in that program. He's got 52 kids in that. He's expanded this classroom to Clover program, which starts kids with science-based learning, where they put a poster together, like in the areas of weather or other science-type topics. And there's three schools now, 175 kids, that are involved with that program. He's expanded that. It was Rowan Oak and Salamone last year. This year it's Rowan Oak, Salamone, and Andrews. So he's got those three schools. You know, I think the schools would like to continue to expand that, so it's just a matter of, you know, it takes, you can't do it all in one year, but that is helping keep kids getting involved with 4H earlier and hopefully continue that development as they go through their academic career in school. So that's kind of an update on what's going on, past what you've got there in front of you. For my program area, in Agonatural Resources, we do have a Master Gardener class currently going on. We're partnering with nearby counties at Wabash and Miami. We've got 25 in that program. It meets weekly, and so we'll have more volunteers trained at the end of the year with that, by the end of May, I should say. So that's kind of a late winter, early spring program. We've also got another community leadership class. It's going really well right now. We've got 14 in the class. Next fall, we're hoping to, we've got a steering committee that's meeting actually later this week, including Community Development, I'm sorry, the Community Foundation, Matt Disler and some others on that. So we expect we're going to have another program offered for, starting in September with that. So that's basically, it was a September to May class where they train people in leadership topics, and hopefully, you know, they'll do things like, you know, get into nonprofit boards or do other type, more into community with leadership is what the goal is of that program. So train more people in those, in leadership. So just wanted to keep you up to date that that's some of the things we're working on at Purdue Extension. So if there's any questions you have, let me know. That's all we wanted to do right now is just to give you kind of a real quick update and have those reports in front of you. If you have follow-up questions, if you read through them, let me know too, so.
So what's been the feedback from the class so far, in the leadership class? Because I know we haven't ran that for a while.
Yeah, it's been really, had good attendance. People are really excited about it, and hopefully that'll generate more students. They'll pass, you know, we're hoping they'll generate others to sign up and that type of thing. So yeah, it was about five or six years since we had a program last, and so it was great to get that movement. I had just good, from Tanner Bab, from Huntington University, Bobby Kemp now is helping with Visit Huntington County. He's on the steering committee, so we've got a really good backing from those guys. So it's, I feel like we're, you know, they want to really keep moving it forward. We feel like the feedback's been good, and so.
Yeah, that's great, because I know the not-for-profits are always looking for
Yeah, yeah, that itself is
That's a good C program for that.
Right. Yep.
Great. All right. Anything else from Ed?
Any other questions?
Okay.
What you do, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you guys for everything, so.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay.
Good evening. Leslie Renshler, Director of Community Corrections.
Hi, Leslie.
Hello. The first item I have for you is I'm requesting a budget appropriation of $162,084.28. This is for the 2025 SIM grant. It was delayed in us getting it, so we are now getting it appropriated.
So what's the SIM grant from?
The SIM grant is from the Indiana Office of Court Services, and it's where several of our community partners work together, and we're able to fund different things, such as public defender. We're funding that, peer recovery with an MOU of one of our community partners, pretrial services.
Okay, so item six, do you guys see that there is a total of $162,084.28? This is just appropriating
Appropriating.
The grant.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I'll say.
Second by Jamie. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next item I have before you tonight is a transfer of appropriation totaling $51,816.75. This is for the 2024 SIM grant. They allowed an extension of that grant so that we could continue to utilize the funding. So I'm asking to appropriate that and transfer.
So you've got a total to work with of about a little over 200?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a little over 200,000 to work with then with these two?
Yes, yes. And the SIM grant will go through September 29th of this year, and then our pretrial grants can take us on through the end of the year, so.
Again, motion to approve. Second by Terry. Second by Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The third item I have for you is a transfer of appropriation from our Community Catalysts Fund, from the insurance line item into longevity, in the amount of $2,000.
Is that just an employee that needs
Three, actually, it covers three different
Three employees. So move, Brian. Brian.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Leslie, I ask if it's okay, go ahead and give us an update, or, you know, give me a couple-minute update instead of
Sure.
You always do better than Terry anyways, so.
Okay. So our active participants from March of 2025, we have a total, a grand total of 322 on all our programs. Between our community supervision and work release, we have 192, and our pretrial is carrying 130, as far as the caseload goes. Our work release is at 53% capacity, so we've crossed over the 50% mark. So that is what we're doing currently in March. And then, just an update of our residential program from 2024. We were able to screen, and this is our second year of operation for work release, we screened 114 individuals. We accepted and served 43. We had 25 completed. We did 43 risk assessments. For the offense level, 20 of those were Level 6 felonies, and the other, there were 23 other offenses that were on up. We collected 218 drug screens. We had 11 positive, so we're seeing a decline in folks using substances on residential program. We conducted 410 case management appointments. We had 421 faith-based live-stream services and Celebrate Recovery that were attended, and those are all volunteer-driven from our community. We had 137 other campus activities with our faith-based partners, 381 treatment, 855 daily chores were completed, 668 employer contacts, so working with our generous employers in the community that employ our folks, who are getting a second chance. We conducted 106 quality controls in our CPC system, which is our call system, and then we had 526 in-house activities. There were 87 life skills activities. Life skills includes how do you make your bed, how do you work the washer and dryer, how do you cook macaroni and cheese in the microwave without burning it. That's just some examples. We had 25 classes completed by Purdue Extension. Thank you, Purdue. We had 53 medication pickups. We conducted, there were 514 shower and hygiene. This is something that we just keep track that they're going in, because sometimes taking care of hygiene is not something they've always been taught how to do, so that's also a life skill activity. We implemented 190 sanctions, 699 incentives, and 36 interventions, so.
The other thing that Leslie does, and it's hugely important, is her, most of these entirely are run by grants, and so your time is occupied, maybe speak to just a second, on all the grants you've got approved, and, you know, we get emails saying, hey, we got approved, you know, and so this is all grant-funded. Correct?
And our project income, so that's on user fees.
Yeah, yep.
Yep.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Sheriff, please.
Just a couple things. Yocum was going to present this first one, but I told him since I was going to be here anyways, I'd go ahead and present it. He's been working with SAS. Do you guys have a copy of that? It's in my appropriation. I don't know if you have it or not. But anyways, SAS, they're the ones, the company that put our computer software in our control room, operates all the water for the secure side of jail, flushing the water so they can't flood the jails, things like that. That computer died, and so it's not been working. We've got it up and running temporarily, but what we found out from the company is, after being up and running for four years, the software is no longer supported. So that dollar amount you see there is to, I've already purchased a computer. I have to ship it to them. Since it's proprietary, nobody else can work on it. They will install the software, and then they will bring it back with them and reinstall it. So that's my request for that for tonight, and that comes to a total of $8,985.
Is that something, do we get an update yearly from them anyways, or is it just beyond?
I think, I think it gave out, and it was during that process. They learned the software was too old and needed to be updated. I think that's how we first learned that they wouldn't even work on it, because the software wasn't any good.
Is this going to require an annual subscription of some sort?
We're working on a service agreement right now.
There you go.
Yeah.
And obviously, this is something you can't do without.
No, it's, 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 it actually saves us a lot of money and a lot of headaches, because the inmates can't flood toilets. We can limit the amount of showers they have. If people aren't minding, I mean, it's all tech, it's all electronics anymore. It's not like it used to be. So yeah, it's definitely a needed item, but we are working with a service contract and presenting that to you guys here in the near future.
You want to make a motion, Shane?
On that one? You're talking about the additional appropriation, right, on the correctional? I was reading something else.
Oh.
You're talking about the next
Item nine, the 8985 for the water.
Oh. Yeah, I make a motion for that. I wanted to make sure, I was reading something else, to make sure it was passing. Second.
Second by Terry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The last one, Jill, you can step in and help me if I get this wrong. When you guys moved all the elected, or the sheriff, the chief deputy, the, all the captains, everybody, you moved that out of my general line item and over into the lift fund, where there's a change of orders, statuses that have to be filled out. I did not know that those had to be filled out for every individual. The only time I've ever filled one out is when we hire somebody or promote somebody. I didn't know, since you guys moved that money, that those would have to be done as well. So we've been paying all the employees out of the general fund, and so now it's in the red. So we just need to see if we can get that money transferred from PS Lift, where you guys had wanted to take it out of and put.
And you not paying them from there is not a problem. It's just that when we adopted the budget, you can't adopt it from what it was advertised for. And when we started budgeting last year, we didn't anticipate this change. And so when council made that change, it increased what we wanted to adopt. So you can't adopt from what you advertised. You have to come back in the following year, and you have to make the appropriation then.
Yeah, this should have been
It was kind of too
Should have been done in January.
Should have done in January.
And this isn't changing anybody's pay or anything?
No, nothing changes.
Just where it's getting paid from.
Yep, yep.
This was moved on the budget worksheet, but she couldn't change it.
Right. Typically, we do that earlier in the year, but
And he's not used to that, because normally we don't do that. We don't pay, we don't pay regular bills with public safety load tax. But some years, sometimes we have to do that. So, yeah, you didn't see that coming, I'm sure.
I did not see it coming.
We're going to try not to do it too much.
Okay.
So, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on that one? Yes. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Terry and then Brian?
John that had a second.
Brian.
Oh, Brian. Brian, you know, you got the motions. Terry gets the second.
Brian, favorite? Brian?
Aye.
There's no scoreboard.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
So basically, the next item is just acknowledging that I provided you with the 2024 TIP management report. I sent it by email on March 13th.
You did.
And it is going to be presented tonight by Blee Bridgette, so she'll step forward and do item 12. So if you can just make a statement for the minutes that, yes, you all received that one now.
Brian?
I'll make that motion, then we heard it. Is there a talking about?
Did you just say yes?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yes.
I read it. Yes.
Thank you.
So the report that you just acknowledged is the TIP management report that was prepared by Baker Tilly. They do this on an annual basis, and basically, it just kind of calls out exactly what was paid into the TIP. So there's, the first sheet that you had in your report was kind of the summary of it, and then it's broken down into each of the TIP districts, Marco West, Plum Tree, and Roanoke, 900 more. So, did you have any questions on that?
So these, these TIPS are overseen by Huntington County Economic Development, which I'm a member of.
The RDC.
Yes.
And then what happens is Baker Tilly votes them up to Gateway. I verify all the information is correct as reported here, and then I submit it on Gateway, so public access.
That has to be done by April 15th, yes.
They are shut down right now, so.
Is there any potential expansion on any of these TIP districts, since they've been established the last few years?
There's always possibilities, but we don't have anything completely in the works. There's some things going on in Marco, but we haven't completely developed yet, you know, so, I mean, they're established so that there is a body to collect, if there's a business that we can help, they're established so that we can take out a loan to help with the infrastructure and so forth, and so that gives you a government entity that can take that loan out. So that's what a TIP district is established for. And then the extra, any extra, help me out here.
So basically, the baseline, so if it's farmland, it's the baseline of this. You put a building on it, and you work this.
We get the
The difference goes in refunds, that can
And with pay, the bond that you establish to get the infrastructure there, or something like that.
That's correct.
That's why
That growth and that assessed value is basically what's used to fund the bonds that you're going to that you're going to make.
It's, it's an instrument used all across the state of Indiana to help develop that ability.
I just didn't know what the activity was within our three TIF districts, if it's.
We could use some more.
Okay.
Absolutely. One hundred percent. Thanks, buddy.
Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Hibber?
Good evening.
Phil?
Good evening. Good evening. Last month, myself and Yocum were here to present, to purchase some polishing fuel equipment for the generators. By consensus, you guys had approved, so I guess I'm here asking for the formal approval.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yep.
I'll make that motion. We talked about it. Save us some money, won't we?
Yep, in the long run, absolutely. Yep.
Motion by Shane. Second by Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Thank you so very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Gentlemen?
Yes, sir. Even Castle, Robert Jeffers, EMA, Thomas Fuller, EMA. And in front of you, I made you a copy of my job class packet. Purpose of this discussion is to follow up on my job class meeting where I met with everybody but John Stoker. He, he didn't make it, but Keith and Brian were there. My proposal was to increase Thomas's pay, and the amount I wanted to increase it was three thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. That would be a dollar seventy-three an hour, based on a thirty-seven and a half hour work week. Funding for this, fifty percent of this funding, which would be sixteen hundred and eighty-five dollars, would come from the EMP salary grant that I apply for every year, and for eight years, I've received it. So that funding gives us up to fifty, fifty percent back what the county pays in our salaries. So that's how I'm figuring that. I'd like to see Thomas come a little closer or be right there at the district averages. I made a spreadsheet, got you a couple of spreadsheets, but we did a District Three IDHS salary comparison, so all the, all the counties could use it with their councils and their commissioners, and if we bring Thomas right up to the pay parity, marks with the other, the average of the other deputy directors that are full-time. Naturally, it always boosts morale. People like a little job incentive from time to time, and retention's important for me at Huntington County EMA. I'd like to retain Thomas as long as I can. I don't want to lose him to another department because of a pay difference. So that's my main factors tonight that I'm basing this on, and I think he deserves it. He does a great job, goes above and beyond, and he's a good employee, very good deputy.
I can, I can vouch that I've seen a lot of work done by Thomas in communication, in the communication side of things, and he works hard in what he's doing. Thanks for the spreadsheet. That helps a lot.
Any questions?
No, but I have a comment, real quick. In the past, not, we're not doing it anymore, but in the past, we ran into some problems where we were not paying people like we should, and we're moving where we should be. Nobody wants to lose good employees just because they can drive ten more minutes and go somewhere. So I like that you showed us about what everybody's making. We're always for keeping our employees paid like at least ever. Losing good employees after they spend years learning the job, it's bad business.
And what was the, what was the plan for this to go into effect next year?
Yes.
January, right?
Okay, so this is, this would be.
Won't change any numbers.
Nothing for this year, okay.
It may be effective the first pay of 2026, which sometimes involves a few days of 2025, and it will also be subject, as discussed by Job Class, to possibly have any additional increase that council would grant to other employees for the increase. Like when we consider COVID. So we may want to move this wage in addition.
We're just planning ahead in 2026, January.
As I was saying, I, I like, I like doing that as much as we can. That way we can budget accordingly. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I can budget for.
Job Class, metal, medicine, we, we agree with them.
Job Class. We saw that you guys, you guys were up on it, weren't you?
Yes.
I'm making a motion. Second, whichever.
I'll, I'll second.
Brian wants it.
Yeah, I'll second.
Keith first?
Keith first, Brian second.
Shane third.
Shane third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Good job on the presentation on Job Class. I mean, not that it was easy, but sometimes it gets kind of hung up a little bit, but I think we had spurred a lot of good discussion and realized the, the value, and basically, I mean, you can read off the bullet points.
Thank you.
And again, looking for 2026 and just trying to retain quality people, so appreciate it.
That was my first. I took one into totally blind, and I'm glad I came out there.
Details help a lot. Comparison data helps a lot. So I like what you put together. Definitely helps the decision tree significantly.
Also set in on a tabletop exercise that these guys did, and I appreciate the readiness that you guys have this county up to in cases of emergency, so.
That's what we strive for. Same for the discussion today at the Commissioner's Office when we talked about the siren. It's just preparedness and readiness, so thank you, Terry. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Okay, so what's item fifteen here? We're just discussing.
Okay, so these are just basic things that we need to change. They're not going to change anybody's wage, but until we get down to dispatch, the first ones are community corrections, changing where two employees are going to have their longevity paid from. And Leslie kind of talked about that earlier with the 22 project income. So that's pretty much just an easy change. We got the salary, and we have to tell where, what fund people are going to be paid for. So that's an update, as well as amending the pre-trial program coordinator, one-one-one-one-one, and pre-trial assistant coordinator, one-one-one-four-six positions to be paid from Fund eighty-six-sixty-one, which is the 2025 SEM grant, until the coordinator has been paid six thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars, and the assistant coordinator has been paid one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. At those times, when that money runs out, then it will also shift, and the positions will be paid from Fund ninety-six seventy-four until the end of 2025. This gets very messy for us.
But that's just basically grant much, right? It's moving grant money, and this one ran out.
Yeah. And so as Leslie explained earlier, she has some grants that are October first to September thirtieth. She has some in her calendar year. And I think she might even have one that comes July first to June thirtieth. So when she sets up her budget, she doesn't always know what's going to be granted to her. It's just a plan. So it causes a little bit of juggling for the salary ordinance, so we thought it's just better to spell out exactly how much money she has in one fund. Once that's depleted, we'll start paying those individuals from the other fund.
There's no questions, then.
And then as far as the council, or the council changes, these are just simple ones that we did at budget adoption. Changed the numbers that your positions were paid out of, but it didn't get integrated into the salary ordinance. So I thought while we have it open, let's put in, clean that up.
And that's just where it's coming from.
Yes.
Just change that.
Yes, it's just a pay one.
You don't get a raise, Shane.
No, it's not.
I know that. As long as we get, move that right money.
And then as far as the sheriff's department, as Chris presented earlier, the four different categories, the elected sheriff, the lieutenant captains, and chief deputy are going to be paid from PS Lift eleven-seventy instead of the general fund, so we have to amend the salary ordinance to reflect that. The next one, let's start with here, Tim's here.
Dispatch.
Yeah. Me might want to discuss the dispatch, but the way I have it set up is once you open the salary ordinance, we'll vote on the, the first items, the community corrections, council, and sheriff, because they don't change anybody's wages. We'll vote separately on what Tim is presenting, and then we'll close the salary ordinance.
Okay. Perfect. Come on up, Tim.
I'd rather talk about this before this hour.
Good evening. Thank, thank you, guys.
Hi, Jim.
Appreciate you having me tonight and, and listening to, to our concerns about dispatch. We are currently a little shorthanded. We're down three dispatchers. It is.
Got to get closer to it.
Closer.
It's new stuff.
Talk like you're yelling at the sheriff on the radio.
Thanks, Sheriff. We, we are currently working a little shorthanded. We're down three dispatchers. All of our dispatchers that have left in the last year and a half, we're able to have positions in other dispatch centers, making more money.
With the academy, with.
Yeah, and, and it's a very difficult position to fill. It takes about three months for us to train somebody to do the job before they can be released to be on their own. And when somebody takes one of our people that have been around, and we had an eighteen-year dispatcher leave at the end of last year because she can make better money working for one of the other dispatch centers. When they can hire one of our people, boy, I, I don't know what, I can't imagine the feeling of, of having somebody trained come in and work for them, work for you, because we, we start from the beginning usually. And the pool for talent, talented dispatches is pretty shallow right now. We have had a few different attempts at, at training some people in the last six months, several different attempts, actually, and the intensity of our job is not getting less. I've hired older individuals, hoping that that would be something that could help fix the, the challenge that they face when they start answering difficult nine-one-one calls, but it's been tough. We actually have a testing day this weekend on Saturday for about a dozen potential candidates. I'm very hopeful, but I asked to get in front of Job Class to ask for a little bit more money for dispatch, try to close the gap a little bit with some of the, some of the surrounding areas that are, are taking our dispatchers. So yeah, I'm certainly open to any questions you have.
Yeah, we talked about this at the, at our meeting this month as well, so. I don't know if it's the board.
Yeah, the dispatch board, yeah.
Committee, whatever.
Yeah.
Not an official board, but yeah, everybody was in favor of what went through the job class, so. And I'm assuming the job class was in favor of, of the changes that we made. Again, very good job of doing the analysis, the comparisons, showing where we're at, where our gaps are, always, always helps the decision-making to.
Yeah, and I'm going to just, I'll, I'll just plug, I'll just give Stephanie a little bump here because she's very helpful. She really does make sure that I provide the information that honestly makes a little sense to, to you guys.
Two, two things.
Yeah.
Where are we in comparison to some of the surrounding counties of the same size?
Well, you know, the, the Whitley County is just to our north. We are, we are not competitive with them. We know that their, their infrastructure is a little bit stronger, their manufacturing base is a bit stronger than ours. And, but they do invest heavily in their dispatch center. They actually have two dispatch centers, one in Columbia City and one in, one for Whitley County. They probably have a third of the business we have, probably thirty, maybe forty percent. I mean, we have I-69 and US-24 both. That, I-69 alone is a lot of business. Any county that has the eye go through it gets quite a bit of business from it. And they have, let me just, for example, Whitley County pays fifty-nine thousand dollars to start, so does Columbia City, and they've taken our last two dispatchers, so.
Can't blame them.
No, no, absolutely not. You know, we just want to make sure we, we make the movement. Yeah, we do the very best we can. Exactly.
I know, I know Tim and Tony both try to make it as enjoyable as dispatch can be. I mean, I know that it's, it can be a very stressful role, a very stressful position, sometimes a boring position.
Yeah, you're exactly right. I mean, we, we can sit around and talk for a couple hours and then not have enough dispatchers to do the job in five minutes.
And, and that was a little bit of discussion in Job Class, too. If you've only got twelve as full staff, right? You have nine right now, and how often do you dispatch as the deputy director?
I have, I picked up, essentially, I work five days at home county.
So, so, so we're, yeah, we're making the supervisor do jobs that he probably shouldn't be doing.
Just keeping him sharp.
It's true. I'm getting back there. I'm old now.
I'll say, as a former law enforcement officer, and he can attest to this as well, twenty dollars an hour for that job is still crazy. I mean, it gets it up, but it's, it's a very underappreciated job. Chris can attest to that as well.
It's challenging. I mean, we, we don't, you dispatch for, because you like to be a part of the solution, and we like being a part of that. I mean, we really do, we are really proud of, I think, the work we do every night we go home. But there are days, I mean, I'll admit, it's nice to be at Victory Knoll, because I've spent a couple of moments in the chapel after a shift, and, and wasn't even my shift. Somebody else came to me after their shift and had a, and said, wow, that was difficult. And we have, we've had a lot of death since COVID, truthfully. It's a, it's a difficult position. I don't know that any of my dispatchers would give up their position because they really do enjoy work, but we, we need help, and we're, we're doing our darndest to try to, to try to catch up. But it is, it's challenging when you're down this, when you're down three dispatchers. It's even tough to train people. So we're, we're working that out.
That was kind of my second point, was going to be, I'm not sure that this is enough money, okay? And that's just my opinion. I, I believe that, I'm not sure what is for that, that stressful position, okay? Obviously, but I vote yes on this. I mean, I am, I just wonder out loud. I mean, you're having trouble keeping, it's not just the money that you can't, the reason you can't get people, right?
Right.
It's, it's the stress, it's the, it's the stress of knowing what to say and what to do in a situation.
Well, and we.
I can't even begin to imagine.
I think everybody understands the challenges hiring people at all. I mean, there's just, there's just not as many people to hire. And when you have a very specialized job like law enforcement or public safety.
You're working holidays, you're working weekends.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, twenty-four hours a day.
Well, I want to, I agree with you, Terry. I looked at the same thing, I thought, wow, how long is this going to last? I mean, so certainly on budget for what we got, but I think we need to look a little farther ahead, and I'm going to just give you a real quick thing, but when I was a young policeman, one of the jobs that we did, we had to sit in and work dispatch to fill in, took mostly to learn the job, to understand what these people are doing or not doing, and how good they are. And as a policeman, we did a lot of things that were pretty tough. This wasn't any easier, but sometimes it was worse, so not everybody can do this job.
No.
Not everybody can do it. Many people can't. Even, they might be very intelligent, but their personality doesn't allow. So you don't have a lot to pick with, so when you get somebody and you train them, like we had some really nice trained people, they left us. That hurts.
Yeah, it does.
That job takes, you said three months to get it, three months to sit in the thing and kind of, and it takes about two years to get the idea of what you're doing. Would you agree?
You're right. Absolutely. No, we, we say it takes three months to release you and a year for you to get comfortable.
But in reality, two years on the job full-time before they really have a good handle on it.
It's truth. Yeah.
So that's what we don't want to lose, people that are four or five years here, and then they're gone.
You might want to take another look, even if, even when it comes about to time.
Yeah, I, I will, I will absolutely listen. Thank you.
That's just one, one person here, out of seven.
And honestly, I, I know that, I respect the process and, and honestly respect the support and appreciate the support for, for the raise that we've asked for. Job class was very, I think, I'd never gone through that before, so it was really, it was a good experience, honestly. I like selling, you know, what we do, and I'm proud of the work that the dispatch crew does. So, it wasn't hard for me to get up there and ask for it, and I just appreciate the consideration, truthfully.
One other thing I'd like to add, Tim, that most people don't think about, but as both him and I, there's a huge liability with civilian dispatchers, too. Mistakes by them, missing what they're supposed to do, this can be very costly, because we are absolutely responsible for what people help, you know, what they get, what they don't get, set wrong, a lot of things. There's a lot of lawsuits around that are because of dispatch. So, you gotta have, not just dispatchers, you gotta have good ones. So, that's another thing, when we talk about money, you get what you pay for sometimes. And there's huge liabilities in what they do, and you know this better than anybody. A lot of people don't think about that. Stake from a dispatcher will get somebody killed or harmed sometimes, just as quick as a stake by a policeman that are a fireman. So, that's another thing that's important.
No, absolutely. I mean, we take the.
But I don't think everybody realizes that they are a big liability. I mean, they carry a lot of bill.
I mean, we get tense just when officers don't let us know where they're at. You know, because we worry about policemen. You know, we're supposed to protect them. And so, yeah, there's a lot that goes into it. Again, I appreciate your consideration on this because it's something that we've, I think it's necessary and at least gets us more in the ballpark of where we need to be.
Yeah, and we don't, you know, normally we don't do mid-year, but I think in this case, we need to do something.
Yeah, I think absolutely we did.
And just so you know, the, since we've been down dispatchers, I don't think there'll be any, need any more money allocated to pay for it this year, because we'll have that money already there.
Need to get the E-911 funding.
I'll get, I'll get, I'll have to do that for Tony and I.
You need to get more dispatches, you're going to need more overtime.
We've got plenty of overtime. I will come back for overtime at part-time, though, probably, so, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to open the salary on this.
So moved.
Terry?
Second.
Second by John, in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, so, let's do the easy one first. I think they're both easy, I guess, but the first one is the, basically moving them around as we discussed, and it's on page one, putting them in the right accounts.
Can we try and do all of those together, but don't have.
Yes, all the things on page one.
Reinsurance to Sheriff's Department, County Council.
Realocating them, no changes in amounts, just moving to where they're coming from.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then on the back page is the new wages. Effective, these will be effective March thirtieth of 2025, as listed on there. Motion.
Motion.
Terry and then Keith?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All, I'll entertain a motion to close the salary on this.
So moved.
Ryan? Second by Keith, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks for what you do.
Thanks, Tim. Try to hold the fort down when yours low, best you can, buddy.
I got a headset for you. I got a headset for you. Just come on in and put your hook right up.
No, thank you. I did that for about a year, and one day a week, and about ready to blow my head up.
Do you handle the drug court encumbrances?
Yeah, yeah, these are, these are. These are encumbrances for Fund 9604. It's last year's drug court grant. A lot of the things that get purchased at the end of the year, we get invoices for. Yeah, and so, we have to go back. It's either this or an appropriation of an old fund, so we just treated it as an encumbrance, and the invoices are listed for the purchases, and we verified all these.
Okay.
Easy.
So, total encumbrance of six thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars sixty-three cents. I'll entertain a motion.
Yep.
So moved. Shane, second by Keith. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, before moving to reports, I have a new, I called it two-on-one for lack of. Last week we did one-on-one, or last, last meeting we did one-on-one was basically walk through, if you want to go to the first slide. Basically, walk us to where the revenue comes in. But you can see there, we have about eleven point eight million between the LITs and property tax levies. So, the property tax levies, you know, roughly seven point five million, and then we get the LIT county share of the four point two, so we've got total funds, funding the general fund of eleven point eight million. And then, on the right side, you can see there the public safety LIT funding. You've got the, the public safety, which funds the Sheriff's Department mainly. You've got the jail LIT, you've got the EMS that funds our, helps fund Parkview's EMS service. And then you've got the public safety access dispatch, which is, which is the income tax. And I have the arrow going down, that adds to the E-911 that I was talking to Tim about earlier, where that has not increased despite the fact that there's been more devices, more payers into that. So, that needs to be, that needs to be increased. So, we got about a million, million-five there. So, that's just a recap of the last one. So, starting with the eleven point eight million on the general, if you hit the tab, you can see there, our budget for 2025 was seventeen point one million. You can see the asterisk down at the bottom. The original budget estimate was eighteen point four. Obviously, there was no way we were going to be able to fund that. So, through budget cuts, some of the moves that we did with the Sheriff's Department that we talked about tonight, we got that number down to seventeen point one, eleven point eight, leaving a funding shortfall of five point three. I use miscellaneous because, you know, I don't know what else to call it. It's things that the state sends us. It's our share of different taxes that we get. All this is on that website that gives us estimated funding for 2025. That totaled about nine hundred thousand. So, if you hit the next one, then it comes down to estimates. It's like, okay, how much should we think we're going to get in prisoner reimbursements, you know, interest on investments, and other reimbursements, like the IT department is shared with the city. Some of that is reimbursed by the city. To get to a million-two-ish was where we were still short, if you want to hit the button again. So, then, kind of my process that I go through and I work with the auditor's office on that is, okay, we had a year-to-date in 2024 of a million-three. We were estimating about a hundred and fifty thousand shortfall for the remainder of 2024, but a net cash flow of about a million-two, which basically said, okay, over the years, 2024 to 2025, we should have enough funding to cover the budget estimates of 2025. So, if you want to hit the other button, this is where we got to get better. You know, we forecasted the seven point seven million for the rest of the year. We only actually spent seven point three, so we had a three hundred forty-four thousand dollar variance. It's good, but again, that's where I think we really need people to challenge themselves, particularly on the last six months, and say, hey, I'm not going to spend this money, roll that back in. I know some of that was encumbrances. I didn't add up that number, but I know some of that was encumbrances. We forecasted, what is that, seven point six million? We actually, yeah, almost seven-six. We ended up bringing in eight point seven, so interest on investments were obviously much, much bigger than what we had anticipated. So, we actually ended up with one point one more revenue, so really a million-five variance, which is good. It goes for a healthy cash balance, but this is where, especially with the changes that are coming up, we've really got to get closer on our estimates going forward. That was part of the reason that I left it with somewhat of a shortfall, is I know we go into it somewhat conservative from that regard. It's hard to predict. This one was just basically showing the cash flows, which is, you know, incoming revenues versus outgoing expenses. You can see the beginning balance at the end of 2018 was basically what the last settlement was. So, we were down to really no cash until the settlement. So, we were really running very, very tight in the general fund in 2018. Slowly but surely, the last two years, contrary to what they're saying down at State House, the max levy wasn't necessarily the increase as we saw in 2023 and 24. It was actually a lot of the supplemental LIT that we were receiving, which were basically local income taxes that we weren't aware of, that they came in mid-year and said, oh, hey, whoops, I got, here's an extra, here's a bucket, million-three that we didn't know we had of yours. So, obviously, those weren't budgeted, so those were significantly, you know, over half of both of those amounts of the growth the last two years. So, we finished the year in 2024 with about, you know, ten million dollars. It sounds like a lot, but that's about six months of expenses. And knowing what we're going into going into the next few years, we're probably going to need that. Then I did the Health Department, just to kind of show, we were pretty healthy there. We dipped into some of our cash reserves in 2024, but we have an ending cash balance of about six hundred and thirty thousand. Reassessment, everybody saw what 2025's budget, we talked about that going into next year. We had really depleted that fund, so that one's going to need to be replenished for some software and some other things on that. Next slide, if anybody has any questions on that. Cube Courthouse is kind of in an accordion, up and down, but basically, we got about four hundred sixty-three in there. That covers the major repairs. It also covers the bond from way back when, when we did the roof and the HVAC. So, that covers the bond. We've got to be close to ten years, I think. It was early, it was early on.
She does it seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, so eight years.
Eight, nine years.
Yeah, so that, you know, so that takes a significant chunk out of that one. And then you can see the Cube Bridge, pretty much break even from 2018, but still a decent, decent balance in there for that account. So, those are just kind of showing what, how those work. I kind of do the same process, so the LIT, the public safety LIT, you can see there, we had one point one million come in on that. If you hit the next one, it's kind of an eye chart there. I was hoping that wasn't going to be, but what I have circled now, it's a lot going on. We had about a negative sixty cash flow. And you can see there in the red, we moved, you know, the four hundred thirty-two thousand over there and still had basically a break even cash flow and an ending operating balance of about a million-five projected by the end of 2025. So, we've got it, we've got a pretty healthy balance there, which is good. And then, if you do the jail LIT, you know, it comes in at two point one, about a million-three of that goes towards the jail bond. We were limited, and we were limited on how much we could pay for jail operations, so it was building because we really couldn't spend it on anything else. So, that one, I think, we'll want to look at, moving some of the things off of the general fund onto the jail LIT to balance that. You know, we've got, you know, 2024 to 25, we've got over six hundred thousand in cash flow there, so, and a healthy balance of four million. I know the sheriff has some major repairs that he's facing, that we'll want to get a handle on those before we make any major, major decisions, but those are kind of the things that I look at when I'm trying to balance and manage and, you know. It does make it confusing, we move stuff around, but that, I wanted you guys to understand the thought process.
In the way it operates, though, we don't.
It is, yeah, we don't know which one, you know, some, you know, it goes to show that LIT's actually been growing pretty substantially because people are making more money, which is great. Yeah, we haven't changed the rate, so that's all organic growth. You can see there, kind of how that's grown from five hundred and eighteen thousand up to two million at the end of 24, and then LIT Correctional, obviously, it's at three point eight at the end of 2024. So, that's those, and then you get into EMS, EMS again, that's just a pass-through, if you want to hit the button on that one. That's just a pass-through. We, whatever comes in, we pass that along through a contract with Parkview, and definitely saves us some money versus having to try to run our own email and service. And then, the Pice App LIT, you can see there, was a million sixty-six. You can see, we combined the two, so when we're doing that budget, we combine both what comes in through Pice App, which we're maxed out. That's where that's the challenge. We're maxed out on what we can collect through the Pice App. And then the E-911, which hasn't changed since I've been on the council, which is ridiculous. We just keep getting a flat amount of around four hundred thousand. So, you know, we only have a million-four to work with. But we balance between the two. They both have decent, we estimate having about nine hundred and eight at the end of 2025 in the Pice App, and we have about nine sixty at the end of 2025 in the E-911. And then, again, that last page is just kind of showing how we were really running thin on the Pice App up until 2022, and you can see kind of the same growth that you saw in the general fund. We're getting more income taxes in to where it grew to a decent balance of the eight seventy-six, and then we got a million one forty-three in the E-911. We were, we were paying some deficits out of there, out of the E-911, just to, because we had, we had the money. We had around a million dollars, so we were paying that to, to obviously supplement our Pice App, which we couldn't keep up with, so. But that's kind of, that's number two-on-one. I will probably have a three-on-one, a four-on-one, and I might run out of numbers, so. Any questions on that? If not, we'll move to reports. We had the community corrections, but we'll move down to solid waste.
Just looking for a more permanent structure toward the recycling center out on West Park, and just, obviously, going to cost more than what was expected, so that's on the more next month on that.
Anything on three-A, John?
I was out of town that meeting, but it was primarily restructuring and officers and that, and Matt Brinkman is submitting a report to me for the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else on job class?
Nothing else.
Nothing else, okay. Lee, Shane?
Yeah, spent most of the meeting working on our CCP, which is our yearly report that goes for the state in April. And part of what we do is we look at the risk factors in any county, things like alcohol, drugs, I don't know. Has things changed? Has our needs changed? And then we look at things like the community places we have now, places that house men and women who have drug problems, and ladies that have a place with their children and all that. So, that's all those in the whole meeting, and then basically, we'll have that done next month. We're down, every year we do really well. We get, we have good problems with it. A lot of places, they have to send it back four, four or five times, so I'm really proud of our local folks. How was that meeting?
Good, good. Lime City, Terry?
Yeah, it was supposed to be next week, and then they moved it a couple weeks down the road, so it's about three weeks away.
EMA, Keith?
No meetings, but they did have an exercise here this past week.
Yeah, I think last week, one of them came up.
It was out at the library. It was well attended.
Good.
It was a good, good bit.
Yeah, I heard it. It was good.
Anything on plea commission?
Wednesday, there's two dockets, one in Markle and one in Roanoke and one in.
Okay. Seated advisor, anything?
Nothing, just reached out to Mark. He.
Got you on the list.
Got me on the list. He says he doesn't like to meet very often if we don't have to.
Yeah. Okay, nothing on HQ, probably nothing on ABCD. Anything on tax evasion, John?
No.
No? Okay. Anything on home?
Tentative meeting scheduled April twenty-third.
Anything on the commissioner health insurance? How we doing on that?
We've got a report, it was February. We're running about, year-to-date, eighty-one percent.
Okay. And we're, doesn't it end in February? Or doesn't it end in?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's good. Anything on EMS?
May eighth is the next meeting.
May.
May eighth.
Combined dispatch, we talked obviously about the wages. We're also moving from AT&T to digital, looks like late April, a little bit, and make that switch. Going to fiber from copper, what a concept. Also looking to update the vesta phone system this summer, and then looking at the access radio systems with Motorola this summer as well. So, lots of, lots of moving parts on the equipment side of things on top of everything else, so. That's all I got on that. Anything on internal controls, jail that we need to know?
Just basically, I submitted our annual financial report, which means state quarter accounts could come in at any time. They usually give me a day or two notice, so they will evaluate our internal controls and tell us what we need to change.
Okay. Great.
It's not stressful, though, is it?
Anything on redevelopment?
Yeah, we actually had a meeting on redevelopment. We kind of, it was a required meeting that the state requires us to have, and we look at those same tipped districts that we were talking about. Beyond that, we're looking at some possible residential tips in a couple places, and we'll have some more updates on that as we go along. Beyond that, we're looking at some possible residential tips in a couple places, and we'll have some more updates on that as we go along.
Sure. Anything on Markle?
Nothing.
Meeting yet? Sure. Nothing else, so entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. You want me, Terry? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Can you tell me who had the motion, please, by any end, by any hearing?
Yep, yep.